We're recording and ready. We've got one more minute, whenever you want to.
Do you think you like a microphone? Jane, I think you're top of the list.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to thank the city council for reporting their performance. I think it was great. I share that all with you, because they were so good. I also want to thank Kristi, that was beautiful, wonderful time, thank them all.
Thank you.
Got lots of candy, but I still have some candy left over. Christmas, for the know it or not, if I use my own words, tomorrow's Thanksgiving and the next day is going back fast, it's going to fly. Calls are delayed, have a way, calls are born up on Saturday, November 27th. Lighting is C712 at 1:30. We'll have more coming about that. But the road needs to be closed at 4 o'clock. And when you request to have the road closed, please request to have insurance car or two. We always got those cars for prime watch. And last year, we neglected to get them. Christmas decorations. And I was going to ask if maybe at your work session, some of the ladies from the women's club beneath the huge, and you could discuss the Christmas decorations. I know the building has decorations, I know the women's club is always decorated. Parts of the town before, we might want to change things. But for a little issue, since town's got money, so we don't. All right, lights on the wax house. There's November the 6th at the Anderson State Park. And as of 6 o'clock, they only had 10 tickets left. Tickets are fully issued. And it's going to be done a little bit different. And I just, you know what temperatures will be that morning.
I think it's be cool.
You don't expect us ladies.
I don't think I have, maybe not, under your ordinances. I think you need to fill the ordinance, the ordinance you say. Limiting through truck traffic.
It's what the ordinance says.
No, sir.
Do you understand what the ordinance is?
It says right here, it says an ordinance limiting and prohibiting truck traffic.
Text the ordinance, I'll read it out to you when we get that part of the agenda, but it does. That's what it's designed to do. The title of the word is made up.
Yeah, because the way, the way I'm reading it here, it's not, I don't think you, you need to, word is pretty good. Unless maybe attorney has already looked at it.
Yes, an attorney.
Okay, and he, this is their wording. His wording of having, I've put this in.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need.
It's unchecked, it's unchecked, it's not, we'll, we'll get into it when we get into the policy.
That's the only thing I had, way it was read, read, written, it didn't sound too good to you. When you said limiting and prohibiting, who's going to know what limiting is? Amazon truck come in delivered. Larry's truck delivered. Have to look it up. Bye.
Thank you, Bob. All right, moving on. Proven November 1st meeting agendas. Motion to consider the agenda. In favor of approving against, say aye. Opposed. Also, for you should be caps the minutes for the October 4th meeting. Motion to consider the minutes. All in favor of approving the minutes for the October 4th meeting, say aye. The proclamations this evening. Linda, do everything to present for the financial report this morning.
And, um. Right now. My bank account balance is, uh, has a 232, 172,000, 742 dollars and eight cents. There are some outstanding, uh, expenditures. It will not show up until, you know, some claims that took place in October. The bank case, uh, uh, government, uh, two accounts. It's a 1031, which has, uh, 81,444,000. Is 36. Our, uh, we go back to the front. Our revenue. 32,000. Our budget balance. It's 145,469,96. If you don't have a chance to look it up, I'm sorry, I didn't, didn't even, we didn't get, I didn't get. If you don't look for it, you got any questions, just let me know.
Thank you. Let me open that up for council discussion. Any questions, discussion on the financial report this evening? I do have one question, Linda, the revenue to date, that 32,000, was that since, since the beginning of the fiscal year? Or is that just? This one, since?
Still have not received our lost, um, money.
Okay.
And local, the sales tax money. For, we didn't really start receiving it until September. This year, which was. They're a little slow in sending the money this year. I mean, this fiscal year. So I'll probably have something in my inbox that they'll fix in June. I've said, I saw we haven't received that far. And we will never, will receive any money from, um. The council or major for use, the use of this bill, so that we.
Thank you. Anyone in council? Moving into the policy agenda this evening. First up, we have resolution 2021-18. It's a resolution to join the South Carolina benefit system. Benefit system. I have a motion to open discussion on resolution 2021-18 this evening. Any discussion this evening? And I'll go and take the floor briefly, just to give a little bit. Clear from the title of the resolutions. The state of South Carolina allows municipalities and governments to, to join the retirement benefit system and the health insurance benefit system. And what we're doing, since we have, actually have a paid employee now, we're joining those systems. With the, these, these two resolutions that require us to do that. With the state, so. Questions or discussion from council? We're ready for the question, do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-18?
I'll make that motion.
The movement seconded, all in favor of approving resolution 2021-18, say aye. Resolution 2021-19, the resolution, join the South Carolina State Insurance Benefits Program. It's been discussed a month ago. Go ahead and open that up for a vote. I have a motion, unless there's.
Thanks, Cassandra.
And so, I, I echo your comments. So it's really been a breath of fresh air to have her help with all of this. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 2021-19? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of saying aye. Resolution is passed. Resolution 2021-20. It's a resolution to authorize the award and execution of agreement for the community center survey. I have a motion to open the discussion on resolution 2021-20. That's been moved and seconded. Anybody care to speak up on that? Take the floor and give a little bit color. So as part of the park project that we are going to be doing to community center improvements over time. Our engineering firm requires that we have a highly detailed topographic survey in order to do the design on various things such as parking and the like. And we've spent actually months trying to, to get the procurement done on finding a surveyor that's willing to do a full blown topographic survey. We finally got three bids. The first guy apparently didn't know what we were doing and never responded to our emails. So this is the middle bid of the three. It's for $5,150. My experience, I think that's probably right in line with market. Anyone have any comments or questions on? Surveying, that I don't know yet, we got to let them know if you want to bid. The passes to. Okay, so, ready for the questions. Do I have a motion for approval of resolution 2021-18? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of saying aye. Opposed. Resolution is passed. Last up, we have ordinance number 2021-08. Some ordinance limiting and prohibiting truck traffic from the town of Van Lake. This was discussed during our public comment section. I have a motion. Open the discussion on ordinance 2021-18. I'm moving seconded. I'll go ahead, well, let's see, anybody else wants to speak up on it first? Give us more detail. Actually, I'm going to read out the recitals on this, it's perfectly clear. All right, so, ordinance number 2021-08. It says, whereas the town of Van Lake is concerned about unnecessary truck traffic within its town limits. Whereas the town of Van Lake Town Council desires to adopt ordinance limiting and prohibiting truck traffic in the town in order to protect the health, safety of the operated town's residents. Now therefore, by the power of authority granted to Town Council, on the Constitution states that our grant in the town by the general assembly of states ordained in an act. Truck zone means an area comprising, since the definition. No truck zone means an area comprising all roads within town limits of Van Lake, with the exception of US Highway 521 and SC Highway 5. Trucks is defined in this section, are not allowed in the no truck zone unless they're delivering to taking on freight from a business located within the no truck zone. Truck means a vehicle with either A, has six or more tires, or B, has a gross weight of 20,000 pounds or more. The truck route means designated road that trucks shall use to travel around the truck. Goes into penalties. Through truck group. All trucks traveling through the town of Van Lake area to those stations outside of the no truck zone are prohibited from entering the no truck zone. All such trucks shall instead use the truck group comprised of US Highway 521 and SC Highway 5. Intracity conveyance. Every truck conducting an intracity conveyance shall use the most direct route from the point of origin within the town and the destination inside the town limits. The ordinance shall be effective upon the second. This will also be available on our website. Now that I've turned that out, do we have any more discussion amongst council this evening about ordinance 2021-18? Question, yes, sir? So, this was at the direction of the SC DOT engineers, I talked to them about trying to put no through truck signs in, and they told us this would be a prerequisite in order to put the signs. So we have to get the ordinance passed, then they'll consider putting the signs in. And once we have the signs, then we need to talk to sheriff. Any other questions? Ready for the question? Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2021-0? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of saying aye. All opposed? Last having, and the first reading of ordinance 2021-0 is approved. If there is more concerns with the, uh, this evening, we do have a second reading, and it's coming up at the beginning of December, and maybe have to consider it then, maybe begin amendments if necessary. On to new business.
You wanted to do the Angel Tree verbal resolution?
Yes. All right. I do have one verbal resolution I want to throw out to council this evening. As you may recall, about a year, a little year. We enacted an ordinance that allowed the town to consider grants to local charities and community organizations if they requested such. We've been approached by the Angel Tree program. They do charity work around the Christmas time and about possibly buying some hundred dollar gift cards for the families that are involved with that. And did we figure out the total amount that were questions?
A thousand. There's 10 families, a hundred dollars each, per family.
A family's a hundred dollars each. All right. So I'm going to open discussion on that, do I have a motion to consider it, say aye. Yes, do I have a motion to open the discussion?
Yep, in the community.
All right, ready for the question? Do I have a motion to consider verbal resolution, that would be resolution 2021-21? All in favor of saying aye? All opposed? That's it for the. Policy agenda, see if we can move on to new business. If we could knock out the easy part first. Workshop, November 29th, 17th, last week, the month of March. Motion to go ahead and calendar that for the 20th, so. Next up, announcement, we have election day tomorrow, November 2nd. Important business on the ballot, I can't campaign for anything, it's a public meeting, and the machinery is at the back of the room there. So if everyone could, please let everybody know. There's election day tomorrow, and we want this kind of polls. Community cleanup, we've got, apparently we've got quite a busy calendar coming up this season. Number 6 of this Saturday, we have a community cleanup.
We're going to do nine.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Well, we don't have the robots next. Yeah, there's this.
Yeah.
Do we want to? I'm down for lunch.
Yes.
So let's do one here. Work things wrong with a little bit, and then. Yeah, announce it, but we're not going to do anything, we didn't really do anything about it until after the election. But there are two seats coming up on the planning commission at the beginning of the year, and two seats coming up on the VZA. So if you have an interest in either. On the planning commission, or the VZA, you want to oversee. Or if you know anybody that might be interested in serving, please let them know, or reach out to number on Town Council, Kristen. Get those things lined up.
Sean, Linda says she's going to stay on for another term if we want.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay. Now, for new business, I had a couple items. So, spoke to the SC DOT engineers of last, couple weeks back. And they are intending to double indicate the old victory in steel building intersection, and that someone's run for it twice. They still don't see any need to really do anything with the intersection to straighten it out, but, uh, they also put order of shots on, and they're going to. I don't know when that's going to happen, but that's, that's a plan. Questions, comments on that? Bob, I think I told you, I gave the intro audio, guys, I'm just doing the audio for the RSC exhibition. Remember today, it's looking up, yeah. He's going to email you the links.
Okay.
Did have a citizen complain. Someone approached me two weeks ago about shooting what they considered to be down at Brickyard. There's concern that possibly the CWP classes that were being held down there started back up. And I don't, I don't know where we're going to be able to determine that or not, but it's, uh, it's concerning, because I was under the impression that, that, uh, those were violating the zoning ordinance, and the owner of the property did cease that. It may not be them, I'm going to reach out to Kyle and figure out, indeed, that's the case. But, uh, yeah, so apparently it was going on two Saturdays ago, I believe. Any comments or questions for council, that's all I have for new business. If you don't have anything for us? Okay, so, motion to adjourn? All in favor of saying aye? Very much. Yes, sir?
Chris, what, what we, that angel tree, is that what you said?
Linda, she does the Angel Tree program every year, and there's several families in the community that have a hard time giving their children's presents. And so she works with the community and gets donations.
Do we have any other need besides just the angel tree?
No, no one's approached this, Bob, but if you know somebody that's going to.
I know we, we have, on this, on this town, we have money, that's money. One of the organizations I'm with, and we're looking for something, somewhere to put it. Or, we've done, we've got, we've got a bit of money, you know, every year. So we're just trying to find somebody to do a little different now. And maybe we could help a couple families or something that are really down on need. Is what we're looking for, a suggestion, so we can check it out, maybe we can.
You could speak to Linda about that, she knows the families in the community that might need some help.
So this is countywide, I mean, they don't have to live right here.
Okay.
As long as it's like this county, that's our problem, we are right here.
Definitely, so I think moving forward, as we, when we get those kind of requests, probably try to reach out to Kyle, if you've got enough organization, I might be able to assist with trying to pull resources on some of these things.
Yeah, you got money to do it, before they treat it to the right people. It does the best job.
Those I was actually.
I have a question about the truck. Businesses that are already established in Van Lake, will they be grand called it in to get their trucks in and out of there?
Uh, yeah, the way the ordinance is drafted, you do, trucks can come in to do deliveries, or load up and go out. But it's the cutting through that's been big for it. So, you know, the trucks that go from steel to one end to the other, they were stopped except the south side. Yeah, that's, that's what we're getting at.
Yeah, I have to take into consideration on Highway 5, it's closed day. Because when I was cutting the grass after Tuesday. I don't know what was going on, but I laid up with.
It was re, trucks that came through. There was an accident, they rerouted.
You couldn't, you couldn't enforce this, that kind of situation. But the police would be routing those through, so they, they would.
I, I think they got them off a five, they never told them where to go. They were going this way, they were going that way. When I left, I went down and turned on Van Lake ready. Well, evidently the road was still closed, so they had to turn in front of Whiteup Church to go down to Steel Hills to go. So those people were lost.
Yeah, I'll see you tonight.
I don't know, excuse me, I'll set grab, I don't know what was.
It was a, it was two trucks, double truck accident, we had very little manpower. We were only able to close off five, keeping kind of the people. Ryan, you're all happy, we got them off a five.
We should probably keep the lower manpower in mind when we vote tomorrow on that revolution for the fire department.
Thank you very much. By the way, y'all are all at campaign, not meeting so. Go ahead and remind everybody.
I have to run to the ground at the weekend, but I would imagine if we had better resources closer, that could have been, maybe not totally avoided, but maybe not totally lost. But we should definitely remember that when we're voting tomorrow. But we should definitely remember that when we're voting tomorrow.
So Rosa, I'll
I just wanted to know, will that include the truck ordinance include the dino trucks?
No, because they're doing deliveries to a location in town.
Yeah.
Steel Hill, that's the shoulder street. Stay in my own place.
I don't know. Steel Hill to five, probably.
Might be, but still.
Especially because if you, I go up that way a lot. So I follow up my parent. I go up Highway five and get six, so.
Yeah.
Rounding them around.
No, I'm not talking about the vehicles. I'm talking about the smaller pick it up.
That's a question.
They're not as far as you have to be because the majority of them don't have enough access. It's like an Amazon land, an Amazon it, it's, it doesn't have enough rules.
I was talking about the brick.
Yeah.
Along tanks. Oh. They have to go. People do not.
In and then they're coming back down.
Well, that is what you said.
We talk about diamond, they don't have a location. They have to be able to get their trucks.
They're not bringing material in. They're taking, they're only taking it out.
Oh, is that what they do?
Yeah, because they house it there.
They're coming in empty?
Yes.
They're filling up.
Pick it up and
but still, they can still do that.
Yeah, yeah, right.
With those double truck and trailer wreaths, that's what really tears up that fine Steel Hill.
Yeah. I try to have a discussion with the county engineers.
Sean, I got a question on the truck on that.
Yes, sir.
You know, I could be ugly and say, uh, if this, y'all trying to shut down and hit the hills and or bricklay down there, because we deliver everything we can. I mean, they come in trailer trucks all the time delivering down there. They deliver meat, they deliver supplies. We have an order in such a large quantity because of this all this stuff going on. And inmate Smith and them have got to run trucks in and out of there to haul that stuff. So I don't know unless you
The ordinance, the ordinance
You're gonna rewrite it some kind of way, but delivery is
You, you missed that part. Deliveries are allowed. Sorry, Keith. Deliveries are allowed.
Everything that's going on down there continues to go on.
It's three traffic that's been
Brickyard. I got nothing to do with that one. I have that thing falls under. And according to the, you know well, I do, according to the county, you've been shoot on a heavy enough truck. As it came out, I got the paper up there where it came out.
Now, if you don't have setbacks for black or shooting range, and the commercial shooting activities, including setback, I believe is fifty yards. And there's nowhere, no, it has to be. But there's nowhere on the Brickyard property that allows you to do commercial shooting activity because you're too close to
Well, that's not really, because Mark, we do in that case, but I care where we don't get a penny card. It's like we mentioned, we're all
Does the gentleman who does the C W P get
I don't care. I, I know.
But we do. It's doing illegal activity on the property.
We what?
We, we do care that he's doing.
He's at the base every night, just half a mile. And he ain't got right through there. He doesn't live near. And it's just, and he doesn't have license. He's getting paid to do it. And it's just a disservice to all the neighbors. I'm kind of upset with Kyle about it.
Well, you've got to understand, they have the owner that says you can hunt.
And he ain't hunting.
Well, he ain't shooting anything. We'll get the chair. We'll get this man. Cannot shoot within a certain distance of that occupied building business.
Yeah.
That's a place for all.
It's a quarter mile, is that?
Several hundred.
I mean, I don't care what he uses up.
The, the owner of the Brickyard has been provided a warning notice from us already.
That's complaining about, uh, all we doing is filling service for two anybody that Jay's land, no money to
Anybody else? Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. One more thing. Actually, I need you to clarify what you had emailed me on earlier. The Indianland Action Council. What, is there a redistricting, redistricting of some sort that's being proposed?
The question has reached the point that the, there will be retweeting the lines. And Ryan Carnes is chairman of the committee, and they had a meeting on last Thursday, Monday, Wednesday night. I did not go, but I went to Indianland Action Council. And I kind of got in on this conversation late, but so some people had suggested that they draw the lines and they would cut Van Wyck in half. So the half of Van Wyck would both have a person and the other half would have another person. And a lot of the people that were there were against it. They did not want that, which I was pleased with. That's great. That, I think that would be a real disservice to our communities.
If this is the county council seats.
Yes.
There's a proposed map.
It's in the paper.
In the newspapers. In the weekend newspaper, but it's not very clear. Can't really read everything.
The website.
But it does, it does show that the, the, at least the first look that
Yeah.
And they do talk about it. They're just trying to maintain the community, don't split communities. The article I read, they did talk about all that. That's their style. I guess they call it top seven.
They talk about it late the Wednesday night.
So, so, yeah, there's a lot coming on with that.
There is.
So like I said, they haven't, they haven't made it to my complete. There is a map that at least look at. Try to get someone to do it on.
I just emailed the team.
One thing for sure, you go get another graphic.
May I make a suggestion?
You go get it. You will have three graphics.
May I make a suggestion?
Just about. Yeah.
They've been to Indianland Act. If we had had a community center act, we would have had it by now. The, the speaker about the is a good article in the paper. But he can come here and talk to us. It's important that we know. She was, I think, had to have two towns. Split Van Wyck. One half shows what the freeway. Or hence, James votes at Van Wyck. She votes at Van Wyck. We vote at Goldville.
It's just the polling location.
So you, you it's my, O C L is not voting.
Yeah, but this isn't about the precincts. This is about
But this is about the county council. This is about the county council.
It's moving forward.
This is just ours.
Yeah, let me read this.